This started, this discussion that we're having right now started with a request for the council to consider a moratorium. And from that have morphed into a presentation from the Kahaba Project Foundation. I just want to make sure, I'm not sure how we advertise that to the public because it may have changed. I just want to make sure everybody understands that's what the meeting is about. In my understanding, and I will put words in my mouth, this is not a discussion denied by the moratorium. Am I correct in that? Okay, this discussion is about a presentation then. I also want to say, you know, I'm assuming that the presentation will be different than the past two presentations that we have heard. We've been giving the presentation and I'm assuming that's going to be different or maybe some more. Because one thing we have to be careful with is to make sure we're not through the city council promoting a forum for them to educate the community. That would be their job to educate the community, not the city council. So I just want to make sure, you know, everybody understands that. So I'm assuming the presentation to the council, the presentation denied is to the council, correct?
To the public.
Okay, but it's information you want the council to take into consideration.
The public and the council.
Well, I can't help you, the public. We can't, we can't have a city council forum to allow a group, any group, to educate the community. That's, I mean, we have to be careful of that because we could, we could have hundreds of groups ask us to do that.
Yes.
For us, it's for us. This is information for the council to take. They have asked, I think, I think the original ask was for thirty-five minutes. We've asked them to keep it to twenty minutes if we could, if that's possible, to keep it to twenty minutes. We also are, we're going to give, I guess, I hate to use the term silence, but I know there's, I know there's proposition because I've gotten emails and every council member has gotten emails. So I just don't, I want to be fair to all the citizens of Trustville. So typically in a forum, we try to allow three minutes for somebody to speak and we try to time that and keep it at three minutes because that's not what we hear, what we hear in the records time in the morning. So we're going to ask, we're going to ask that, we're going to allow a presentation to the council and then we're going to ask that everybody keep their comments to three minutes. If, council, and I'm asking you, don't question, if there's somebody in opposition, yeah, he was a member, then are y'all able to allow them the same amount of time to talk if that's necessary? It's totally up to y'all.
I don't see how we can say that.
We could. I don't, I don't think we should, but we could. Okay, so everybody, so if we did today, we'll do it. Let me, let me just say this. I said this the last time we had a presentation. This is Trustville. We are neighbors. We are family and we care about each other. And we're going to do that in here tonight. We are not going to be unruly. We're not going to argue. We're not going to debate back and forth. That's not the purpose of this. And we're, we're, we're just going to, we're just going to be neighbors about this. If you have a difference of opinion, that's okay, but we're not going, we're not going to shout back and forth. We're not going to jeer. We're not going, you know, talk people down. We're going to give everybody who wants to speak an opportunity to speak. I would ask you if you would do this, if you want to speak, we're going to give you an opportunity to speak. Everybody gets to speak. You rise and state your name and your address. That's for the record. And then you can speak. I would ask if you agree with the person or two people or five people that spoke in front of them, if you would just say, you know, I'm Allen Thales. This is my address and I agree with the last comment. That would be interesting. There's really no need to repeat the same thing over and over and over again. So if you could do that, that would be interesting, but we're going to give everybody an opportunity to be heard. Is that fair? Any questions from the audience? Yes.
I would ask that you would come to the microphone and speak if you're going to say more than I agree with the person that spoke in front of me so everybody could hear it.
All right, everybody got that? If you've got some words to say, go to the microphone so everybody can hear it. If you just want to say a few words, Stacy's right up here has got the microphone. She can bring that to you. Or if you just say, please be out, stand behind a boat and go to the microphone. We'll come to you. We just want to make sure everybody's on. Everybody, if everybody good with that? All right, and city clerk is going to keep the time. When you get, when you get close on the twenty-minute presentation, when you get down to the last thirty seconds or one minute, if that's all right, I'll raise my hand and just say, you know, you're getting close on the, on the three minutes when you're speaking. When you get down to the last ten seconds, I will raise my hand and that is happening, it's kind of rapid. But if you go to three over one, we're not going to be able to do that. So this, we just want to be respectful of everybody's time. Okay, all right, so we'll ask the Kahaba Foundation to inform you.
I want to make sure this clicker too to be working so that we don't have to slow things down by someone else, by me saying next.
Make sure that's on.
Different slides. I believe, no, it's not on.
Turn mute, push mute.
Push mute.
I know this one just doesn't know, but.
Is it kind of a little off? Or maybe it should be.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, you can hold it. Can you hold it or just whatever you have?
Is that, is that good? Can everyone hear me all right? Okay, so I'm Amy Peterson O'Brien. I live on 303 Brentwood Avenue. I'm the president of the Kahaba Homestead Heritage Foundation. And I want to thank the council tonight for the opportunity to clear some things up about what the, the foundation's intentions are. Just a personal statement about me and you can ask my neighbors, I mind my own business. If you're sick, I'm going to offer to bring you something, you know. If you leave in town, I'm going to ask if there's something I can do for you other than that. I'm not a, I'm not a control freak. I mind my own business, raise my family. I love living in Trustville. And the same goes for every board member of this foundation. Our mission is to support through education, outreach and civic involvement and such things that promote, perpetuate and enhance the value of the community, the Kahaba Project community as a historic district designated on the national register. And that word "value" comes as a lot. We want to enrich communities a lot with annual events such as the Flag Day event and a holiday event that we're looking forward to planning and asking for volunteers, individuals and family members. So that's also part of what this foundation is doing to add to that value of its neighborhood. But first and foremost, we're educational and we have plans for a house museum and we're discussing the possibility of a public garden. Something, both types of entities of future visitors and our Trustville will be proud to direct people to in the neighborhood and city. So those are just a couple of pictures of the flag on the mailboxes. I didn't want to spend a lot of time on this, but it came to my attention recently and I think it warrants addressing. There's a petition that mentions a local group and that desires to establish, what's it say, Kahaba Project, a historic district designation and create a more stringent process for construction addition and so on. It doesn't mention which group that is, okay? It just says a local group. Who is this group? If it's referred to us, we've never stated this, so I want to be very clear about that. So look, everyone makes mistakes and this could just have been an honest mistake by the author of this petition. The last paragraph of the petition says focusing on the future of Trustville is most important and we could not agree more. That is why we're here tonight. That's why the foundation was created. But the petition is inaccurate and misguided at best. And at worst, it's spreading fake news through a petition using the town seal. Is this endorsed by the city? Would be my question to y'all because it uses the city seal. And I don't know who the author is, but I would ask the author to correct it or remove it.
It is not endorseable. Nothing, the city don't endorse petitions.
Okay.
But let's, let's be careful for everybody. Let's be careful pointing fingers at people from things that haven't been presented or have been offered. Let's be careful of that.
Okay, so this is after and I just want to discuss it. Now, I don't want to spend a lot of time on that. Let's move on. So our, our foundation, our friends, has been educational persons for us. For the last six months, longer for some of us, the foundation, the board members have educated ourselves on local histories, city dynamics, success stories around Alabama cities that we as Trustville can learn from. I would recommend that you came here for a history lesson, but a brief overview is at least worth it when discussing how a city intends to provide a future while honoring and not erasing the best of its past. Just some of the sources that you find on the website. So we have something here in the Kahaba Project in Trustville that connects us to a larger American story. Not just, we're not just part of that American history. We're an extremely rare piece of that American history. Very unique and so successful, in fact, the city of Trustville incorporated in large part due to the success of the Kahaba Project ten years after it was created. Now, cities have a prerogative to erase history or to promote it or to be indifferent about it. What's it going to be in Trustville? So the New Deal history, if you just want to kind of glance down at some of the projects that were part of the New Deal like the Kahaba Project was, with the WPA and the CCC. So we had the Great Depression, was an unprecedented time in our nation's history and the New Deal often believed recovery and reform. There were projects costing less. This is just a sample of them that are more recognizable. The Kirkland Observatory, Hoover Dam, now famous bridges and condos and parks and stadiums. And communities. And artwork. All, I think it was, if you need to refresh your memory on it, it's worth doing. And we're a part of that fabric. Now let's more specifically about Alabama. Some of the examples of the WPA projects in Alabama are DeSoto Park, DeSoto State Park, Cheha State Parks, Bonner Tower. I didn't know this. Vulcan statue, pencil. Battle Hill on Oregon, Fort Oregon, the list goes on. Wheeler National Wildlife. And I only did the ones that are more recognized. There were many of them. They also did in Alabama, an interstate post office, you know, firehouses, police station, schools, libraries, you name it. Even the architecture here and these examples in Greenville look reminiscent of our school here and it's because of the neoclassical architecture that was predominant at the time. So one hundred of these communities were created during that time across the U.S. One hundred. Eight of them were, and I know some of you have heard this before at the public meetings, it's worth hearing. Eight were in Alabama, four in Jefferson County and just one, one was right here. Land that was selected by some prominent Birmingham citizens and it was going to be a farming community just like many of the others were, subsistence farming at the time. But this was different. The flag did not make it suitable. And so they took a turn in the project and decided to show off. And that is what they did. And of those hundred farming communities that were done across the U.S. and neighborhoods, this was really the only one of this suburban design. Not only because of the flag, right, Slinky Village, but because of the proximity to Birmingham. Remember, Trustville didn't exist as a city then. As a community, yes, as a city, no. So it's one of the kind of nation and that makes Trustville one of the kind. Just some images that we've shared on social media on the website. We know the community is still successful and one of the kind. We see it on the city's website and rightfully so. The gazebo on the seal, the red famed high school, now, now the Kahaba Elementary School where my kids go. Trustville's 2040 Plan. I wanted to mention that just because as cities responsibly do, they've had a Trustville Comprehensive Plan, mentions the Kahaba Project extensively. The 2040 Plan, much less so. It's, it's mentioned in regard to its proximity to downtown and to traffic. That's a significant difference from what you would find in 2006 with the Comprehensive Plan when it, when it referred to the traditional neighborhood of the Kahaba Project as a model that Trustville could successfully go by as they develop neighborhoods and they have and they've done it very successfully. You know those neighborhoods. They're beautiful. Many of the, the best elements of those were predicated on the best elements of the project. And it's small. I know it's hard to see from there. We're just one-third the square mile. That's it. Some pictures of the neighborhood. Almost look like a movie set. And that's because of sense of place. That's it. You got, you got a unique sense of place. These are some of the examples from the National Archives and just a couple of the homes that fit similarly within those designs. So best places to live in Alabama. Let's, let's talk about what Trustville fits into the scheme of things. What makes it unique? What does it have that another city has to offer? What makes it authentic? And these are questions that cities have to ask themselves. I want to take a look at a couple of Alabama cities with a unique history, like Trustville's unique history. So if we look at O'Leika, their population is thirty-one thousand plus, so a little more than, than we came in at the most recent census. Population wise, Trustville's now, and it's in the top twenty-five, it's now moved to twenty-two. And this is downtown O'Leika and similar feel to what we have in Trustville has that small-town feel. Your bards, your, you know, your community theater, the museum exhibits, all very much similar to what we have here. Historic districts. You know, traffic houses, large lots. Looking a little bit at their holiday events and how they promote their historic districts and their uniqueness in their town through tourism, through its charm, its history, that's your authenticity, right? So O'Leika's a great example of managers who grow while protecting what makes it unique. Another example we'll go through quickly is Gunnersville. And their historic areas include downtown and residential areas. Their post office building was a WPA project. Reminds me of kind of a very similar in, in look and feel to what we have in downtown. Some residential examples in Gunnersville. So there's the post office and I have a picture of the mayor's words about, about this one. He said it is one of the true landmarks in the city. It was built by the people. That's like the Kahaba Project. I mean, this was, we're talking about the same era in our nation's history. And he also mentioned why the city, you know, took control of it or bought it, really, they bought it instead of selling it to the developers, what I mean, because he said, we don't know the future unless you control it. They had a plan for it. They put a plan in place. It's just simple as that. Let's look at Huntsville, who's come in at the highest population in Alabama. And they, Huntsville has so many historic areas. You know, Trustville only just has this one historic district. But for Huntsville, they have grown while protecting their historic areas. Protecting what was already of value to them was the foundation for growth, not human activity. And when the mayor was asked about being the largest city, because we saw that coming before it actually, the consensus, you know, confirmed it, he said, my goal's not to be the largest city. Our goal's to be the most livable. Smart planning. So Trustville, it's among the twenty-five best places to live. It's very common to see that. I see some nodding. Yeah, we, we know this. We know how appealing it is to be here. One of the ten fastest-growing cities between 2010 and 2020. As I mentioned now, the second largest city. And so when we start as a city getting into those rates of the top ten and the top twenty-five, the largest and most livable, you know, you're thinking about what you have to offer. And I know our city council and city leaders are already thinking about that. You know, downtown is proof of that. Past and future, best of both worlds. Talking about protecting the Kahaba Project is not anything new. This has been going, this is a conversation that's been going on for twenty-five years. Long before I moved here, twenty-five years ever since the Kahaba Project turned sixty. You know, so when something turns to fifty, he is eligible for a historic designation. Ever since that, we're talking twenty-five years of this conversation going on. This is not new. So why now? Why does it matter now? Trustville's 2040 Plan is, is, is part of the answer of why this matters now. The city taking the initiative to plan ahead as they anticipate growth, as they want to attract the quality workforce and residents appeal to young families. That's all part of smart planning. And right now, the Kahaba Project does not fit into that plan. There is not a plan for it. There is a process. There's a process called designer review. That process, some would say, is working, okay? It's an advisory group, an advisory committee, a board. People can choose to follow it. The advice, people can choose not to. So when you say it's working, working by what measure? Working to what end? Because that process is not currently part of a plan or a vision for the future of the district. Downtown has a plan though. There's a vision for the development and how to manage the growth of downtown. I don't see why Kahaba Project, your most iconic, historic, most visible neighborhood, should have anything less than your highly visible and attractive downtown. All right, change in neighborhoods. Many of you have lived here longer than fifteen to twenty years. And if you talk to the people who do this professionally as we have, they'll tell you and you can witness it for yourself. You don't need an expert to tell you that change occurs most noticeably in fifteen to twenty-year periods of neighborhoods. So what do we have happening in fifteen years? It starts in ten years, right? Nineteen thirty-six to twenty thirty-six. Don't do that to me, please. I'm going to keep talking until it comes down. Dan is going to take these seconds away. So, you know, what will, what will that change look like?
We just want to stop.
I appreciate it. What will that change look like? Will it be managed change? Will it be predictable change? We can safeguard the qualities that we value in the neighborhood. Really only with a vision, with a plan in place. Because, yeah, of course, change is going to happen right away. I want to hear, a process does not equal a plan. So we're not talking about a process. We're talking about a plan. Kahaba Project housing types, very familiar. I'm sure to many of you, you probably live in one that looks like that or you, you know it well. This is hard to see and I apologize, but if you look at that first line, that is one-hundred-foot lots and you see the spacing. So just picture the mall. It's very much that kind of pattern of the house and the green space between, based on the lots. You know, based on that R1 residential sized lot. You look at on the second row, that's going to be the addition of one new home. So you're talking about a very different scale on that size home and, you know, sort of maxing out those setbacks. So just look at the flow there. Look at, you know, third line, this is one-third new homes. And I think new homes, we're, we're talking about homes of a different scale. And then you look at, and not just these, my gosh, those have gone, you know, so far back. You drive through and some of you don't know how large they are because they're, they're set deep. This is a different, this is a street view. Two-thirds new homes in that, in that fourth row. So, you know, I live on Brentwood. You can, you can, if you're a visual person or maybe if you're not, you can picture this happening on any given street in the neighborhood. Now picture this though, on the mall. What happens then? How does that change things? All right, nineteen thirty-six to twenty thirty-six, fifteen years for a centennial. So getting back to this, why, why now? Why is it important to do now? We have a national treasure here, something really unique. Yes, there's a good school, but it's more than that. There are a lot of beautiful cities, beautiful towns, good schools. This is unique and is an asset to the city of Trustville. So how will Trustville celebrate the Kahaba Project? Centennial years between twenty thirty-six and twenty thirty-eight. We have some ideas in the foundation that we're, we're excited about because we think it would be good for the city. You know, you can promote it without taking over people's lives. You can, you can bring people to Trustville to see what's special about it. And have them go downtown, have them experience Trustville, what we have to offer. Right now, we're not really promoting that. We value it. We say we value it. We're not really promoting it as a city. Just going back to the people's street views. So I'm just reading off the screen. We can witness change, right? Or we can manage it. It's not the sentimental thing to do. I would argue it's not even a controversial thing to do to have a plan for your most unique district and only historic district. It's just a smart thing to do. Great, okay. I do want to say something about RCP has been mentioned. Residential Kahaba Project, a different type of study. And we went into that a lot and our city attorney's firm has done due diligence in looking into that as recently as 2019. And it's worded that there was an attempt to create RCP. I'm not a lawyer, but that doesn't sound like it was a legally sound and thoroughly, you know, viable process. So if that's something the city wants to consider, then they could look into that again. Again, designer review process right now is not a plan. Maybe it could be part of a plan, but on its own, it's just a process. Every day, homeowners benefit from situations of uncertainty. Plans can provide that certainty. Someone does benefit from situations of uncertainty and that's speculators, okay? If you're speculating, you can make a profit in situations of uncertainty. And that's it. That's, that's our benefit as far as homeowners go. People that are invested for the, as homeowners in that community and as members of the community, those average homeowners like myself, like most people in this room, I imagine, you're not the one that benefit from those situations of uncertainty in the neighborhood. Having a plan in place would help to introduce that certainty. And that's, that's it. Where does that leave us? Project one hundred, centennial. We're leading up. We've got fifteen years to our centennial and now is the time in order to shape the future vision of the Kahaba Project. And so what's next? Outreach. There will be public opportunities to provide your input. There will be private opportunities for those who don't want to do it. And in-person and online options. So that's the next step and that's forthcoming.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, if the council are feeling okay, this is open to comments from the, from the audience. We're on, again, ground rules. We don't leave, we don't limit it to three minutes. Raise your hand. Everybody who wants to speak has a good chance to speak, so we're going, we're going to do that. Be sure, be sure you say your name and address and it'll be fine if somebody's speaking if you want to line up. That's, that's okay too.
I'm James Patterson. Christina, I live at 129 Parkway Drive. Oh, I'm not old, Trustville. Been here four years, but I've had that family here for thirty-five and I got here as soon as I could. I retired from my career in law enforcement in Montgomery, Alabama. It's interesting. I haven't, hadn't seen Amy's presentation of, I started my law enforcement career in Gunnersville and was at all the city council meetings as a law enforcement officer as they went through the plans to preserve their historic areas and I watched that happen over the years. That's, that's home. That's where I grew up. That's home, that's where I grew up. And then I became a state trooper. I went to Obalika, and I watched that historic area. I walked through that historic area when they had the Azalea Trail and the Christmas celebrations that they had there, and I enjoyed it very much. Then I transferred to Montgomery when I got promoted. And I didn't enjoy that year as much. But I spent the last half of my career in Montgomery. And when I retired, came to Trustful. I came here because my mother was here, my brother was here. My mom was a child of the Depression. She was born in 1929, and they were very poor. And the TDA and the CCC changed her life. Her, my granddad worked for the TDA building the dam and muscle shells and then y'all. And my mother used to, when I'd come to visit, she'd drive me through the Kahaba Project and tell me the history of it. She was an educator. And she told me her whole life about how important that was and how the CCC and the WPA and the TDA had changed people's lives and saved them from the Great Depression. That's why we had the Greatest Generation, because they learned that history. Now, all that brings me to this. We moved here because we wanted to live in a good neighborhood. I think, this is, I think you're wrong. I don't think we've got sides here. I think we're all on the same side. I believe that everyone in this room is here because we want to preserve the quality of life and the value of our homes, our residences in Trustful. I think we're all on the same side. What we have to have is an approach that meets all of our needs. And I don't know how to do that. I'm not an architect. But I know that I've seen hodgepodge neighborhoods. I've lived in them. And I've lived in bad neighborhoods. I've lived in good neighborhoods. And the architecture, the beauty of the Kahaba Project matters to me. We moved here, and the first, we had already decided that we would buy the first house that met our needs in the Kahaba Project, and we did. And we've renovated extensively, but we've always been true to the architectural style of that home. When you stand in front of it, you can't tell that it's not the original, but it's a whole lot bigger than it used to be. And it's got a lot more features than it used to have. We can do that. I lived in a neighborhood with a homeowners association, too. And it was miserable, because some of the things that I wanted to do, I could never get them done, because even though it would be approved, this process to get through that took so long.
Am I too tired? Can be close.
Okay.
Ten seconds.
Anyway, I think we're all on the same side. I don't want homeowners association, but I want us to have standards in the Kahaba Project neighborhood that preserve the feel of that neighborhood and preserve the look of it. We sit, I sit on my front porch. Christina teaches at Kahaba Elementary, and children walk by or ride by on their bicycles and say, "Hey, Ms. Patterson, that's the kind of neighborhood I want to live in." And it doesn't exist many places. I've lived all over this state. There's not much like that. I'm proud to be here. Thank you.
Hi, James Matthews, 107 O Street. This is, gonna try to phrase this conversation for us to see against the judge for. First, thanks to the community as a whole in regards to the previous administration, current administration for building up Kahaba Trustful, giving place for payments to come. Of all the entries and sizes, I voted on, my family, my family persists. I was on O Street. We do have plans of remodeling our home building. For the current modern day family, if you go to the house, they'll either be not allowing you to have the fall space, the size of the rooms, the size of the driveways. But in doing so, you've actually improved value of your home. You increased the value of your home, the size or arrangement. But let me, let me paint a bar conversation here. You must understand that it's the lady before us speaking. When you go through your presentation, you have to understand preservation of history, what you protect. The question I have for us, all of us, is either you are arguing socialism or do you share a socialist point of view? Is only one socialist point of view. First, you have to understand the history of what you're trying to protect. The project was started by the artist who showed up in Germany. One of the persons who started socialism in our country, government housing in our community, with our government housing to keep you home. The only thing we're promoting is government welfare and promoting taking your tax dollars and the distribution of your money to someone else who can quality society and to make something as a whole. Your preservation of the socialist party, neither. So, while structure of your homes may be the beginning of this neighborhood, it is none of the accelerated protection, rather, the growth of our neighborhood and the value of it. It's the exact opposite. It demonstrates how creative choice improves one's quality of life in a community who maintains a status quo or tries to restrict based on government policies or asking cities to make a shift in codes. Often, very few people would have a rational thought and say, "Yes, I'm a socialist." However, none of us truly understand what the day's common, how to bring socialist tendencies into our society and taught and slow the trend into our logic, our education. How would we make a decision to protect our children? The definition of socialism is that a community must regulate the individual's choice. My favorite comedian, Joe Fox, would love to throw a couple of comments out here. You may be a socialist, and you have tendencies of socialism. The community decides the shape of my house. You may be a socialist if the community decides the roof of my house. You may be socialist if you decide the sound, the size of the dimensions. Or you may be a socialist if the community decides my house will be torn down or removed, or moved for certain setbacks. You have to be able, if you're a board member, see your homes that have infrastructure made ways, build homes for specific reasons to them. Our family lived in Trustful, and the project's set foot because it was an establishment for the close proximity of a plan. We were not controlled by any association, nor ridiculous governments on board telling us what and how we can do it in color. Families do not accomplish profit with the attention of devaluing, rather, they want to improve the system of the community. And the houses we're building today, the constructions, are improving our values and preferences. You guys can do this in person or community development. Thank you very much for this. You can all do it as a whole. Thank you very much for everything.
When I raise my hand... Is 10 seconds enough for us? Are you going to have to 20 or 30 or whatever? Do you have that number? All right. I want you to raise your hand, continue. If you want to raise it, there's some other time left. If you can, start right there. Zach Seal, 505 Rock Ridge Avenue. I always wanted to get that. I was perfectly happy to not, not have to hear another consent agenda thing again. So, it was nice to do the next step. Yep. Hey, everyone. Most of you know me, my name is Zach Seal. I'm a little surprised to be here tonight. I've made a conscious decision to stay on the sidelines from all city stuff. But I watched the video of the last workshop a month ago, and I just decided I should come and speak. For those of you who don't know, who don't remember, in 2018, I proposed a historic preservation ordinance for the city to be considered. People did not want that. And in a way, I feel like this process has become divisive, and that's on me. That is not my intention, and I'm sorry that it happened that way. I'm sorry that our neighbors somehow got bitten and injured each other. And I thought I was just doing something as simple as protecting a local historic landmark. It's a lot more complicated than that, and we all understand that now. But what this comes down to, to me, is protecting the city's most valued historic landmark versus ensuring people's property rights. But I don't think it has to be a versus. I think everyone in this room can agree that the Kahaba Project is a special place. The city thinks it's a special place. It's on the website. We talk about it in plans. It's been a source of joy for a lot of people in this city who live in the project, who don't. Because, I mean, there are, there are people that I know that live in Carrington that come down to walk their dogs and put their kids on strollers and jog in the Kahaba Project. It's a special place. We all agree on that. And it's special because the United States government decided in the '30s that it would be a good idea to pay people to build, who were starving at the time, to build a neighborhood in the middle of the Depression. That damn socialist roast oven. So, yeah, I, I happen to like what the Kahaba Heritage, the Homestead Heritage Foundation's doing. I think they have the best intentions of our neighborhood in heart. And I definitely think they are not thinking about historic preservation ordinance like what we talked about in 2018. In 2019, after all the dust had settled, Mr. Soder and one of his associates come in and talked to the city council about the options for preserving this historic landmark. I think the answer lies in that memo. I also think the answer lies in us listening to each other. Thank you, Allison Taylor. But I'm going to quote again to finish. "We're neighbors, we're friends, and we all want this neighborhood." Thanks.
But, but, the heat is next, and then you go.
He's next.
Oh, Gary's next, okay. I'll go whenever you want me to. Gary Wood, Spotters 204, Drury Run, Trustful Alvin. This is a little weird. I used to dislike covering you guys, not speaking to you guys. For those who don't know me, I'm not a Kahaba Project resident. I am a Trustful resident. Many of you might have known me because I have written about this city. It's history. Your family members, you've probably seen my name on a story about somebody who's been doing nothing more than a decade now. What you may not know is that I'm an officer in this Kahaba Homestead Heritage Foundation. The only officer who does not, who does not live in the Kahaba Project. And behind the camera phone, behind the website, social media, behind some of the historical information, but now, finally, I've decided to do this. I was going to talk about history, but Trustful's history, especially the Kahaba Project's history, is too rich to fit into three minutes. So, I'm going to move ahead and, and, I just tell you all that I went to Hewitt Trustful Middle School when it was at the historic school building on Parkway Drive. At the time, I did not realize it's where this neighborhood's historical significance. I learned that in 2013, when I spent months in a windowless room in the Trustful Public Library researching the city's history for a book. And I learned a lot. I could not believe how historic this city is. What I learned is, like the village, the Kahaba Project is rooted in originally history. It's already been said to me, the Great Depression, the New Deal, FDR, the Greatest Generation, slag from a blast furnace that you can still find today. I've taken my toddler, and we have picked slag around my Trustful Public Library. I just, to me, that is just the coolest thing. There is tangible history right here that I can grab, that my son can grab. So much of what we spent learning in books, you could go outside, go in your backyard, and it is right there. That's just such a feather to have in the city, I think. Trustful, largely because of this historic district, because you hate not only in Jefferson County, not only in Alabama, but in the United States. It's not hyperbole, it's just fact. I won't lecture on history. I'll leave that to the professors, but I implore you to study this city's history, the Kahaba Project's history. It's, you'll be amazed. There are so many stories, and there's just so much to learn. It's important to know your roots. The Re-Subway Administration Project, this is a heritage, cultural, and historical resource national. It's a gem. It sets Trustful apart from any other place in the nation. 10 seconds? Hear that. It sets Trustful apart from any other place in the nation. The uniqueness of the huge draw of Trustful, one that hasn't been tapped into enough, that's been mentioned. He can fasten it. Fasten it, seconds?
We're passing. Just, yeah, wrap it up.
Okay. Let me skip ahead. To close, I just want to say that now is the time to figure this thing out. I'll let go of Dr. Steele's head. Now, I'm going to use that neighbor's. I don't think there's any, there shouldn't be biases in this. There shouldn't be. When someone speaks, listen. If it's the opposing view, listen and then respond. Don't have gut reactions. Don't, try, try not to, you know, formulate your opinion when you haven't gotten the facts straight, right? I don't have the answers, which is the last two sentences. I'm a guy who have to read, study, and talking about Trustful's unique history. I felt proud. I'd like to see us steward that history the best way we can. We can show our kids, our great kids, what it's like to be a model community. One that stewards its historic past, celebrates it today, while flourishing into the future with the amenities of a progressive city. Again, like I said to you, Trustful could have the best of both worlds, and history would reward that. Thanks.
Hey, my name's Jason Garner, 131 Parkway Drive. I know we're out of three minutes, so I'm just going to read this. It's something I wrote today. Normally, I don't get up here to talk, but something happened this weekend, and maybe you want to get up here and voice my opinion. So, now I understand the CHF. What are the goals? If this group truly wants to improve this area, then why do you not spell out writing your goals to CHF and things you're trying to accomplish? If you've done this already, did you make a survey and send it out to the neighborhood for a consensus of goals that our neighborhood as a whole wants to accomplish? Instead, did the self-nominated board members make up their own personal agenda and act as if it was, it was good for the Kahaba Homestead? All they had done is brought up over and over the historical significance of the community. Through between the lines, it seems like the board members are pushing their tighter restrictions agenda by showing articles and bringing in professionals and educators about historical homestead areas. Again, were the CHF board members selected by our community in a fair vote or did people who are pro-tighter restrictions come together to form this and push their main agenda? The historical preservation has been pushed down our throats since this has been formed. The CHF is really about the community. There needs to be leadership and goals, items to be addressed, both big and small, and put forward and put out for everyone to see. Why not try to get some wins and accomplish some small things for the community, which would help build trust in CHF? For example, reach out to the city to pick some of the race, the men race slash men's stuff sidewalks. Some sidewalks are badly ill and eyewitness walkers, bikers, and runners trip over these on multiple occasions. As another example, why not have the city workers plant more lean on Cypress trees in front of the public works facilities to block the orange parking cars and work vehicles to get them to stop dumping concrete pipes and bricks outside the property and clean it up? When you go to the park behind the library or the park to go to the updated base vault field, it's a huge ice ornament, looks like an ongoing construction site, but can easily be hidden by some screen plane. Instead of suggesting some small projects like this improve the community, CHF keeps bringing up the issue that's causing most survival community and dancing around what you're trying to accomplish. Seems in your goals to educate enough people here thinking to get a 51% vote to set their restrictions for this area. The CHF is truly a non-biased community of people. Why do you not bring in professional speakers to talk about how updated housing in areas like this is a potential good thing, and it can raise property value? Since by law, you cannot make someone properly maintain their home. You can't expect someone to spend three to 10 times the amount of money to fix a home that you didn't expect a creative owner to fix. So, why do you not bring in some professionals and educators on how major renovations to 2021 building standards and/or tear downs and rebuilds even held property value in historical communities? So far, this discussion has not been fair and balanced, and has been only seen from one side of the coin. If you're looking for an area with a blend of historical homes and tear downs and rebuilds, we have Home Wisdom for Flaring Needs as a case study. Now, I want to talk about our community, completely off topic. But something happened on Facebook, and we brought up, and one of our board members brought up someone tearing down their house and put their address out for everyone to see. Shame on you for doing that. You were held to a higher standard as being the vice president. And it frustrates me, because it makes someone not feel welcome when you put their stuff out there, and it leads people to make comments. And the only reason you did it was to cast blame and bring this up in bad light. And that's uncalled for in our community. And I know I'm right, because I took it down as soon as I put the name on it. People, if you don't even know why, they happily take it, tear their house. You don't know. There's reasons other than just they want to tear it down. It does make them feel welcome, and your community, first, not having it.
Anyone else?
The other 1330 Fairview Drive, I was right outside. He did, whoever that was, put that up and commented. My number is 2052126. You can go to my house and just tell it's the address. Uh, you can come to my house, I just told you the address, I'm here to actually talk about it. But there's reasons why people wanna tear houses, a lot of reasons. Uh, in 2019, I hope you understood, but, we've got one side, that's all we've got in this city, is a historical, there's not one house on a historical record in Trustville that I know of in the project, not one person. So, we'll come up and ask about that. Then you wanna talk about the history of the project and all this stuff, not one person has talked about what they did to start the project. They took poor black families, took them out of the spirit and moved them to the 40s, 40 program. I went to school with them, with some of them. So did Scott Walz, who lived still with people who lived up there. They're the people who were outcast, and now they're trying to make people outcast now that wants to improve their area and like tearing their house, needs to support them and build new houses. And then they say they don't really care about what they said. Somebody put that up there, I didn't put it up, that you're talking about, that I did up it. But, most of all, it was true. But there's two sides to it, really, you don't say, there's a process, a plan. The process is there, the plan is there, if you're calling to fix a property, man talked about buying a house here years ago, it is gold, it's a fair down, they can build a nice modern house. That's a plan, may not be your plan, it's a plan. So, you know, it, it really depends on the business office was around them. Now, if you have a wrong piece of wing, that's, would it not develop, you put things in process, and you say you can only build this or that. I've never been building a house since 1983, I've never been in a subdivision that had a maximum size, or you keep building because it's too big for the neighborhood. You know, it's amazing, they didn't complain if we were building small houses, they didn't complain if you built houses that were awful, people paying three to four hundred thousand and tearing their house down and doing it in a new size. You should be proud of that, instead of making someone feel like they're trash for doing it, and I don't appreciate it. There again, they're interrupting. I gave you my address, my number, and you can catch me at Jack's in the morning till I spend on there for, be glad to talk to you. Thank you.
My name's Ralph Mitchell, I live with my wife, Maria, 510 Rock Creek Avenue. I'm a lifelong Trustville resident, previously served on the city council. There are, there are two jewels that exist in this city, one on the Trustville Utility Board, and one on the Kahaba Project. Without being one of these two jewels, this town would never become a city, and all will be development around Trustville would never happen without the Utility Board and the Kahaba Project. The Kahaba Project is the hub of the city of Trustville. Every subdivision, every development, everything else has been built out here, as they spoke of that hub. If you don't protect that historical hub, and the hub deteriorates, all the spokes will fall out of that hub. When people talk to me about coming to Trustville, they don't talk to me about private and character neighborhood, Tuckwiler neighborhood, any of the other new neighborhoods, they talk to me about private and the Kahaba Project. That's what Trustville's known for, is the Kahaba Project. Now I've talked to just about everybody on the city council about doing something to protect the Kahaba Project. Some of you have said to me, I just don't know how we would enforce that. Well, have you seen the social memo of February the 6th, 2019? Rick and his folks laid it out to you, how you could go about protecting the Kahaba Project. I mean, this is 38 pages, I don't know how much the city paid for this, I'm sure with Rick's billing rate, probably a couple thousand dollars, but there's a lot of information right here, and everybody on the city council should know this backwards and forth. I challenge you, if you have not gotten a copy of this, I'll be glad to supply it to you, the city has to give it to you. Now Leo Russo's written mine, and I do not hate Leo Russo, nor do I hate what Leo Russo has done, I can give you, but I would like for all of us to realize that what the Kahaba Foundation is trying to do is not tell you what color to paint your house, or that you can't add over to your house, or that you gotta cut your grass, or what color to paint your house. The Kahaba Project Historic Foundation is about preserving the curbside architectural design review of your house. Nothing about what's done inside your house, nothing about the tear down in your garage, nothing about expanding off the back of your house or putting wood in your back, that has nothing to do with it. And these false statements are being made, and false recitation, they're talking about what this would do to the community and the neighborhood, those are not true. People have come to my house about this, they send me emails, I get phone calls almost every day, ten seconds. I would ask every single person has misrecitation, if people would just go to the website and learn about what the foundation stands for, it would eliminate most of the discord that's out there. So I would challenge people to become educated, to do education, we can all find that common agreement. Thank you, Dr. Yen.
Hey Ralph, I see you did that, I'm interested, but you did tell me. Hey, 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 Leo, 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 I'm gonna do that. I'm gonna do that. That was all thanks to, sorry. I need to think that word.
Uh, hey everybody, I'm Jake Garrett, I live at 526 Rock Creek Avenue. I grew up in Trustville, graduated from high school, teach here now, a D teacher at Kahaba, coached football in high school, um, and, you know, I've lived here my whole life. I love Trustville, I love the area, uh, the project area, that's where I bought a house, that's where I wanted to live. I think I've heard some good points, uh, coming from both sides of this, whatever you wanna call it, um, and I, I just wanna say that I, I agree that it shouldn't be a business thing, um, and it really shouldn't, but it is, I think a big reason for that is that it's a way that I feel similarly to, like, I have an issue with anybody telling me what I can and can't do with my property, regardless of inside, outside, whatever, if I wanna do whatever I wanna do with my property, I should be able to do it. Um, but, I think it's very important for us to protect what we've got down here. I think if it were up to me, I would say my merger would be if somebody is going to tear down a house and rebuild it, what they should do is to build it back in architectural style of the neighborhood, that's what they should do. And I agree, I, I, that's what everybody should do, that's what I would do if I were gonna do it. But I also have a real issue with anybody besides me telling me that I have to. And, so I think that's where I'm standing on this, and that's, I just wanted to say that, I don't think it needs to be business, I, I do think that everybody should kind of follow some of these guidelines and deals, but I, I, I just, I just make it real uneasy thinking about somebody that's not paying my board who's telling me what I can and can't do with my property. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's Nene Rock Fair. I was born in 122 Meadow Lake at home, 1939. My parents moved here from New York and New Jersey to Chattanooga. Came here with four boys and had three more of us at home, all born at home. Um, and I still live in Trustville. Lived around with it after, early in my marriage, but moved back in the house a little bit. I'm 81 years old, 82 November. I was very active in civic affairs, scouts, church, PTA, park board, my mother started the library, my dad worked on fire, fire, no, fire extension. I've been indoors for a couple of years. I taught school and taught a lot of that for one year, retired for 22 years, had four children, went back to work, worked for the next 38 years in addiction counseling, and I've been retired for about three years. I don't have a lot of energy, I have a huge amount of passion and interest in the project. A lot of times we're asked to do things we don't wanna do, like wear masks, and there's a lot, a lot of resistance to doing things that other people can't do, but there was a very good article, I think, in the Trustville Tribune, about how, how a community loses its value, and, and the status of community loses its value over the years as the buildings get knocked down and replaced, and we've seen that in some areas. It's heartbreaking to me, there are beautiful homes that were built in Trustville that don't fit here. There are beautiful homes, like the home I was born in, which is doubled in size and it looks exactly like it did from the front, except for an extra weight, you can't see the back that's been added on, or the two extra bedrooms, there were nine of us that lived in three bedrooms with one bath. And that's a beautiful house, 122 Meadow Lake. Go ahead.
Ten seconds. Ten seconds.
Oh, ten seconds, okay. I'm in favor of keeping it to look, to look like a project, even if it's a brand new house that fits in to the style of the project, and there's wonderful architects here, they've done beautiful jobs with the project homes, and I just would, uh, like to encourage people. I'm not gonna be around and see what it's gonna look like in 15 to 20 years, hopefully it works out, but, um, I'd, I'd just say that for people my age, who probably don't get out as much as I did, um, you're not gonna hear from those people much, but our, our children and the next generation like Guy Jones, and you know, I'm more his mother's age, um, those are the people who have families in this project that would like for it to stay, the Kahaba Project. Thank you.
When is your time to address? Mr., when is your time to address?
2:06, thank you.
I'm Krista Dawson, 128 Parkway Drive.
Give me a second.
My name?
Sorry.
I'm Krista Dawson, 128 Parkway Drive. From what I've heard, everyone's very passionate from one side or to another, and I feel like there's a very defined line that can make everybody happy. Also know that there's a lot of people that move to Trustville for the Kahaba Project area for one reason or another, whether it's the flat yards, or the small house, or the schools, whatever it may be. And there are some houses that do need additions as well, to accommodate, like you said earlier, for the large families, lots of kids, two bedroom house is not gonna make a family of seven or eight very happy. I feel like there is a, a happy weekend to make everybody happy, and I would love to see people pick some of the ambitions where you're far this side or far this way, people can all come together and make everybody happy. We all need additions, we all wanna keep everything happy, I just feel like we could all do this a little bit better, if we just keep our ears open to listen to what everybody is. I don't feel like the purpose of what anyone's wanting to do has been very clear to everyone. And, and I'm still kinda confused on what, on what that is as well, so if we could have a little more, I don't know, communication about what that plan is, is what I would like to see.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm Justin Lincoln, uh, 318 Grandwood Avenue. We've been through the, uh, current renovation plan with the design review board, I think it worked very well. Uh, we've lived in our house for about, I think about 10 years, um, we did that certainly years ago. I don't, I'm just having trouble figuring out what the takeaway was from the presentation, but, um, I did take away that there's no plan, and I would like to say that we do have a plan, it's just our plan. Um, I would ask if you guys help us protect our plan. If you wanna change the plan for 318 Grandwood, then you can buy it. That's all, that's all for me. Thank you.
You got it, gentlemen, 123 Parkway Drive. And I just wanna say I support the Kahaba Character Foundation, with their effort to try to build a consensus of what this community wants. I know it's, Leo, Leo and I are good friends, and don't have any problem with Leo, and I understand he's got a house to build, and he'll build it fine, he will. But what we need to do is come together as a community and build that consensus, and I just wish that I would, stop choosing sides, and let's work together to get this done. Thank you.
I don't have anybody short, but it's also summertime at my house. I'll stay here for another few days. Anyone else? Okay, all right. Um, council, any, any comments, um, from you, we'll start down with the council body?
Um, I do appreciate, um, Amy, and the foundation's work that you have done, I'm not sure if this is on or not, um, a lot of good work, a lot of knowledge I've gained, actually. I've lived in Trustville for 32 years, and there are several things that you have brought up and put on your website that are very educational and makes me proud of that we do have that in Trustville. I also respect the rights of the homeowners that have their homes and have lived here for 20 plus years, or however long they, if it's just been two years, that they do have the right to, um, work with their homes as they see fit. I do believe in the design review committee, I think a neighborhood needs to be cohesive, whether it's the projects or whether it's Trustville Springs. There's a certain look, when you have an HOA, you have covenants and you have guidelines and that's what you follow. There is nothing that will, there's not been a form of HOA with the Kahaba Projects. So that's something I'll have to study as a counselor on how that goes forward. I know that there is zoning, the Kahaba Project zoning, that I don't believe anyone has joined. Um, but that's, that's kinda where I am on that, I do appreciate you all coming out, it shows passion. Um, I love Trustville, I've lived here for 32 years, we've lived in several neighborhoods, never in the projects, but I've always loved the projects, so, um, I appreciate you, really do, thank you.
Councilor Jordan?
I, I also appreciate everyone coming out tonight, and I am very appreciative of the foundation's efforts. Uh, I think that, um, you know, I think it was Ms. Dawson, I don't know if she's still in here, uh, she said it best, I think that we still have to find that happy medium, and I think that the foundation, uh, with this platform, uh, is the start of the conversation, uh, and that the community, I, I truly think that both sides can come together and we can, um, solidify a solution, uh, that, you know, allows us to preserve, uh, a, a piece of history, um, with property rights in mind, so, uh, like you said, it's just the start of the conversation. Like I said, it's just the start of the conversation, and I think the foundation has more efforts out there to further educate the community to really get everybody a better understanding of what the plan is. And once that plan is in place, I think that with input from everyone, I think we can really narrow it down from there.
Thank you, Counselor Jordan.
I want to echo the same thing that Counselor Wright and Counselor Jordan said. I really appreciate the foundation's efforts. You guys know I love Trussel. I am so thankful, and I'll just mention one thing, that the school, Kahapa, there were people on both sides of saving that school. I don't know if anybody, a lot of you may remember. There were people who got together and decided that that would be an important building to save. That was my middle school, it was my parents' high school. And think about just the decision of that group to decide that that's not something we want to tear down and rebuild, or what we wanted to add on, make it better, and open it for our kids. And think how many people want them to live in the Kahapa Project and have so their kids can watch school. I just want them. I do want y'all to know that I took notes, and I should have married you too, about public works building in sidewalks. But thank you all. No, no, we got down here. So thank you for bringing that up, but thanks everybody for coming out. But I do think we can work together and figure out a way to, to preserve this in a way that does honor property rights, but also, just like we did with the Kahapa Elementary. We recognize that it's part of our past, but it can also be such a good part of our future and a draw for people. So thank you all for your time tonight.
I've been in Trussel forty-four years. A lot of you have already heard me say that already. I have a passion for Trussel. I got married in seventy-four. My wife told me that I'm moving to Trussel. And I said, we can't afford Trussel, we'll move to life. She kept looking in Trussel and finding, finding houses in Trussel before. So we bought a house in Trussel, and so yourself, you mentioned here. I raised all my kids here, with a system that goes down. A passion for Trussel. It's deep rooted, maybe not as strong as just some of the others here. But forty-four years is about half my life. So I, I do respect and I respect every property owner. I don't think that anything I say or do is just taking anything lightly. I know you bought property, you inherited property, you own it, you do with it what you want to. All we're asking you to do is to preserve the gem that we have. I'm sorry, I rephrased that. All the foundation that we do is to protect the gem that we have here. It's a, it's a value for the state of Alabama and the southeast, honestly. And I think, you know, we're, we're charged with something to do here. And I want to ask, I guess, Counselor President Taylor to, you know, once we're all said and done, I know we're going to take action in the workshop, but, you know, what are we charged to do with this meeting tonight? We just take out the information. If I can make a suggestion, then I would think that, you know, both sides, and I know there's passion on both sides, that, that a plan has been presented, the conversation's been started, I'm sorry, a plan has been opened up, this conversation's been started, that, I know there's no sides here, but all come together and have your input, what you would like to see. And, and, you know, whoever develops the plan, whoever has the majority input in the plan, ever had works out, that's the plan that, that, that if you want to go forward with it, that's the plan you present back. Whether it's what you like or what you don't like, then I think that's the plan that you need to, I guess, take a look at. And you'll come back with a plan. Right now, we do have a process. Some of the plans are processed. And you can, you know, pretty much go through the process, and it does seem to work all the time for the safety of those who want to save the project. So, you know, that's what I want to say about that. Again, I'm open to keep in all the conversation. My phone number on the website. I'll answer any time of the day, which if I can answer, I can answer any questions from anybody. I'm sure to be there too.
Thank you. And Mayor, I'll make my comments, and then you can close this with me. Thank you. I started the night with a comment about sides, and I apologize for that. That's, we, we are trustful, and the word I should have used is there's passions about this issue, and I understand that. Nobody loves Trussel anymore than I do. I, I hope, I proved that over the last thirty years, twenty-five years I've been here. This is my third term to serve. I've volunteered a lot of times and did a lot of things. Announced football games and basketball games and did Trussel for a lot of years with no pay. Garrett retired from it and started paying somebody. That probably tells you. One thing I can tell you, they got their money's worth out of it, for sure, over those years. But, but I do love Trussel. I love the Kahapa Project. I, I do. I love the Kahapa Project. But I also love all the other areas of Trussel too, and they're important. All, you know, I live in Tubular Farms. It's important. And the entrance to Tubular Farms is important to me. I went to, I went to speak with Dr. Highway eleven and think, this is a, this is a great place, and I want that to happen. And I know all of you want the same thing. This is not the first time we have taken up this issue. Several years ago, the last demonstration, we had this same conversation, the same thing came up. And the city council, the sitting city council at the time, the mayor, came up with, call it what you want to, it was a plan. Call it a process, say there is no plan. But we did. We came up with a solution for us to try. And, and that solution was to have the homeowners come to design review. Many of you did that. Some of you came with plans that they didn't really like and changed. And there's been some that didn't. But there, there is, there is a plan, and if somebody said it, you may not like the plan, but there is a plan. And so I don't think it's fair to say, well, we've just been operating with no plan and no vision, because that's not true. There is a plan. I respect the fact that you may not like the plan. I have a lot of people talk to me about coming to Trussel. I'll be honest with you, ninety-nine percent of everybody that talks to me about coming to Trussel, they come because of our students. And that's what they'll tell me. I've moved to Trussel because of our students. And I think us making the decision to build community elementary schools added to that. But we, people come to Trussel because of our students. We mentioned cities up there. Tiddyn, it's got historic district. There's some uniforms. But I, I mean, the two that was mentioned was Conner's Board and Opelika. And I mean, the regular schools. I'm not saying it has anything to do with them having a historic district, or it's not, but if, I, I just tell you, people move to the community, and the value of communities has a lot to do with schools. And it's why when I sit on Highway eleven right now in the afternoon and traffic is backed up and we're all irritated about it, and you'll see on Facebook, I wish Trussel was what it used to be. You know, we didn't have traffic, and I wish we were there. But every time I'm sitting in that traffic, I always think, Lord, thank you for our students. And because of this, because of the things that's happened, we've been able to build the schools and we've been able to build the house. I'm thankful for that. I agree, we're all, we all really have the same goal, and we want to protect all of Trussel. We want to do what's right for Trussel. We want to, we want to do what makes Trussel the best place to live, the best place to worship, the best place to eat, and we want it to be safe, which is the number two thing I hear about people moving to Trussel is because it's a safe place. We, we all want that. And I said, I said it last time when this came up, and I'll say it again tonight, you know, the devil's in the detail. Councilman Cook asked me, what are we going to do with this? We haven't been asked to do anything. That there, there, and, and this is our third meeting, and there's been no plan presented. I, I'm open to hearing a plan of what this looks like. The devil is in the detail, because that's, that's where, that's where you think it's passionate now. Wait till, you know, you start putting a plan together and says, this is, this is the type windows you have to use, this is the type roof, and this is the, you know, type door. This is, that, that's true. But, but bringing a plan, bringing a unified plan from the community to say, this is what we want to do, we haven't heard a plan. All we've heard right now is what all we've done wrong. And we hadn't had a plan. Well, we did. We did the best we could do as a council at the time to try, to try to do what we could do and suggest to people, and in a lot of cases, it's learned. And, and I, I know where the latest heartburn comes from. I understand that. But, but we did, we did the best we could with the information and the plan. If you have a plan, if the community comes together, it, rather than the, if the Kahapa Foundation's rather than making a presentation, come together as a community. Come together and come up with a plan, bring back a plan, ask for what, what you want to do. And it will, will, will tell you what our part could, could not be. And so that's, that's it. I, again, I, I didn't mean to say there's, there's sides. This, this is Trussel. I love this place. I'm telling you. My raised kids here, my grandkids here, and we're planning on being here a long time, so if you don't like it, we just might, we might just live with it, because we, we're not going to.
Mayor? Want to say something?
Tonight, I spoke with Billy Morrison when Billy came in. I've been knowing Billy a long time. And I know Adams apologized for using a word sad, but I think Billy summed it up best when he said, these, these are opinions, and these are feelings, and how people feel. I think tonight is a great example. I think the one common thing, thing that came out of tonight, honestly, is what we all feel, is a true love for Trussel, and, and as Trussel in the city. There's passion. I, I applaud Amy and the foundation for, for reminding people of what's important to you and to the foundation and the project area. There's nothing wrong with that. But I also like the fact that, that we've had this meeting. This is the third time, and I'm not, I'm not previously with the foundation, but we've had this meeting before, and we did listen to it. We put a more tour in the, in the project area. We regrouped with the city. We went to our design review committee with some instructions. We worked with actually the inspections department, David Arnett, who's no longer here, came up with the idea of presenting plans to people when they wanted to add on a building home if they were going to have to take it down. And we didn't have a plan for the first two homes that went through there. But I know the next two homes that were project homes. May have been, in fact, one of them changed their entire design to go back and pay the architect, redesign and incorporate several architectural features that are in the project. Does it look like a project has? It doesn't to me, but it does have architectural features of the homes, and that's all I can say. And I think that's where people are going to, we hope that's where they're going to land. We're, we're going to suggest to them, we're going to give them every opportunity to do that in accordance with what most everybody in here would like to see. But there's going to be change. Changes are happening around this twenty-six thousand people here now. Not everybody lives in the project area. Everybody knows where it is. I pulled out a sheet from my very first meeting, I think in two thousand and seventeen, when we had the first house mistaken down, and we had a room full at the city council that night. And, and I go back and look at the things that was mentioned that night that was important to everybody that lives in the facility, the historic nature of the, the project area. Sidewalks, trees, convenience, a pool, a library, parks, ball fields, school, would like to have a school, the historic feel of where it is, a safe community, and they love the community events. I don't think any of that has gone away. I think it's still there. I think that's what creates the passion for that area. So I want to say that we, we have listened, we have, we have tried without government and parents, and I'm not one to, to step in and, and, and put my mark or our mark on something that I think, as we said tonight, this, this is something that can be worked out among neighbors. I certainly don't want it to be a divided neighborhood or any of our neighborhoods. But I think, again, one thing I take away from that is a passion for Trussel and a love for what we have here, and a hope and appreciation of what we're trying to do as a city that's moving forward. And I thank all the people that spoke tonight on both sides. I thought you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank y'all for being here tonight. Yes, sir. Sure. Three minute.
I want to go back and, and kind of cover some, some things that Counselor President Taylor said and the mayor said. This is a great example of passion that people have in Trussel. And I, again, I respect everything that, that homeowners have in any subject. So I would like to ask, if I may, Counselor President, that, say, by December first, everybody concerned that wants to have input, whether it's this group or that group, come together, formulate a plan, bring it back to the council, and let us look at it by December first. Is that something I can do?
I don't know. You just did it. I, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I, again, you, you, I, I think if that's what y'all want to do, I, I don't want us to legislate a timeframe for y'all to bring something to us. I, I mean, obviously, if you have a plan, bring it. But yeah. Whenever there's a plan, whenever it is, if it's September first, whenever, whenever there's a plan, bring it, bring it to us. All right. All right. Good luck. All right. So we're going to, thank y'all. Hey, we meet tonight. It's a lot of fun if you want to come to see the council. Maybe we don't do this all the time. We'll go through the agenda. But thank y'all for being here, and Coach Garrett just left, but I wanted to tell him, you know, let's make sure we be pensive tomorrow night.